Okay.
When you get down to the last minute.
Oh, great, and after the meeting, if you want, if you can want your email name and email address down real quick.
Color tonight.
Oh, you got a card? Great.
Not even a mint.
Talking with him.
Nothing.
I guess they presume we're gonna be out soon, or they don't wanna let us know.
Yes.
I forgot what you were talking about.
Right, right.
And ask him for any suggestions. He gave me some.
Yes, it is very supportive, and we're moving forward as fast as we can on that.
You ready, Mayor? It's your last one. Are you ready, Mayor?
I know, and I've been trying to prolong it. You know?
I mean, he's not bad enough.
Marcus Luttrell.
Marcus Luttrell, yeah.
Yeah, I read both of his books.
I think that was Wahlberg's.
Maybe it wasn't.
Confessionist sister. That was from the start, and now you're on team, bro.
I like Wahlberg.
Got some heroism.
I guess it's official now. I don't know I got this.
Hey, try not to be emotional.
Where?
Um...
You moving down?
No, I don't have that.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss you.
Ah, moving down.
I know it's not on here, this is kinda at Libbit.
I'll be back at some point.
Anthem.
Musical chant.
When I'm sitting in that seat.
Wow, what a good crowd tonight.
I know so far.
Don't say that too loud.
A good crowd, huh?
Let's see, so...
He would.
I was gonna say, is he an actor, like my boy, an actor and singer, or just an actor?
Well, you know, you wanna pronounce her name, or you...
Let's not go there.
Ms. Klotz, I'm just saying.
Ms. Klotz. Yes? Klotz. Klotz? Hey! Who? Well, remember though, you don't go all over. How you doing? I haven't seen you, Jim. All right.
Wait.
Good.
George Kretikas.
Thank you very much.
George Kretikas.
Yes.
And then, these are...
We stuck with him longer.
Well, you know, just been here. I mean, you don't wanna call her.
Oh, okay.
I don't wanna have a wrath on you.
When I move, we'll have to bring my color with me.
Yeah, does Susan have one of her own, and does she use them?
They don't have one in the seat, she's gonna be sitting. Oh, she'll be sitting in this seat, so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Y'all ready?
Because I believe you were saying.
Mike?
So, what's your prediction, COVID-8? Town just got COVID-8.
Uh, I think that would probably be pretty close. I was thinking ten till eight o'clock at the latest.
I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 5th, 2016, at, uh, 6:32. Roll call?
Mayor Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by, uh, Pastor Eric Matheny, East Lake, Church of God in Christ. Will everyone please stand? Please remain standing for the presentation of colors by troop forty-eight following.
Dear Lord, we come thanking you certainly for how wonderful you have been to this great city and the citizens of this community. Dear Lord, we thank you for all that the mayor and the city commissioners of this city have been able to accomplish. We thank you for the spirit of community and unity and love that fosters in this city. And dear God, we thank you that this city is a community that believes in unity and believes in doing what's right for its citizens. And as we honor and celebrate the accomplishments of this commission and this mayor, and as we transition over into new leadership, we ask that you continue to bless this fine city and the citizens that comprise it. Help us to always do what's right, help us to be a community, and help us to love you in all that we do. And we thank you for all the greatness that you've bestowed upon us in this fine city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Troop, attention. Call guard, attention. Call guard, forward, march. Call guard, post the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Troop. Troop buddies, call guard at ease.
If not, everyone can, uh, be seated. I have, uh, the pleasure of, uh, all of you, uh, to me honored guests, but we have tonight with us, uh, former Congressman Mike Belorakis, uh, the, uh, Ms. Klotz of the Greek consulate. We have, uh, our friend, uh, the mayor of the city of Clearwater, uh, George Kretikas. Um, also, we have former Commissioner George Babodas, Glenn Davis, Jane Kulianis, and former mayor Anita Protos with us. Hopefully, uh, I didn't miss anyone. Uh, they say that Commissioner Delakas is somewhere in the room, definitely we wanna, uh, recognize him too. Anymore? Uh, is Senator Lapvala here? Well, hopefully he is, 'cause he's next on the journey, you know? Um, we've been trying to do this for a little while, and you know that Senator Lapvala's a little busy, but, um, wanted to let him know that he's always been a friend, uh, to the city of Tarpon, you know? He tells that one story that I don't like too much about a former mayor bringing, uh, some goodies to Tallahassee, and it started off, they had a little small car, and then it went to a bigger pickup truck, and then they had a trailer, and it was a semi, and the rest, and taking goodies up there. But, uh, we, we wanted to let him know that we, we don't have that type of money anymore that we could be doing that. But what we do have is a, a key to show you that we do appreciate you. So, if, Jack, if you can come forward, and this, uh, reads with our greatest appreciation of Jack Lapvala, Senator, for your outstanding and dedicated service to our community, 2016, and it's from the city of Tarpon. If some of you don't know, Jack played a great role in getting dollars to renovate this in terms of this being the Cultural Arts Center, and he's done many other things for the city of Tarpon Springs, and we just want you to know that we appreciate you for all that you've done and all that you will do. Applause.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and yes, you only have one failing, and that is, uh, that you didn't carry forward the tradition that, uh, former mayor Protos, uh, who I'm sure is in here somewhere, uh, of, of bringing your Senator Baklava every year. But now that we have another Greek mayor, I, uh, to be, I'm sure that he will pick that tradition back up again. Um, you know, you're a wonderful man. It's kinda bittersweet to be here and get this, uh, key on your last night as being mayor here. Um, you've done a wonderful job, uh, the, uh, the way the community thinks about you and the love that the community has for you is really, uh, the kind of example that all of us strive to, to be as, as political, as, as public officials. We all want people to love us, and you've accomplished that. And you've accomplished that because you're even keeled, you're kind, all those qualities that I'm still searching for. Um, but you're kind to everyone, and, and you worked hard for this city, and, and I for one, uh, as a senator here for a lot of your term, uh, this time, and seems like you've been here forever, just like me, uh, but, uh, wish you the very best, and, uh, thank you for everything you've meant to me and to the city of Tarpon Springs.
Well, as we move along here, we go into presentations, and it says, the, the first one is, has my name on it, so...
Yeah, I, I think that means I get to do the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, uh, as, as vice mayor, I'm gonna be making a presentation, uh, basically saying goodbye to our mayor, uh, David O'Archie, and as Jack just said, this really is kind of a bittersweet presentation, uh, 'cause the mayor really has done such a phenomenal job, uh, over the last six years. Um, but we do have some parting gifts, uh, that I'm gonna have the opportunity to give to the mayor, uh, but before that, I've got just a couple of things I wanted to, to say about, about our mayor. Um, first of all, he must be really, really intelligent, because nearly the entire time we were up here for six years, we voted the same way. So, I, I believe he must be very intelligent. Um, but, but on a more serious note, I, I do wanna say that over the six years that Mayor Archie has led this board, uh, he has done so in a calm manner. Our, our meetings have been calm, and as a result of the, uh, calm manner that, that the meetings go, they have also been very positive. And as a result of the positive nature of the meetings, we've gotten stuff done. Uh, it's been a very productive six years, and a lot of that has to do with the work of Mayor Archie. Additionally, on those rare events when the meeting isn't going well, uh, the mayor knew exactly when to try to throw in a little bit of humor. Now, I'm, I'm not gonna say he necessarily succeeded, but, but he knew when to, to try to throw in just a little bit of humor, and, and I really can't say enough about what a fantastic job Mayor Archie did, uh, for these six years and for the, the positive contribution that he made. Uh, but at this point, I've got a, a few different things to present to you, David, uh, starting with a gavel plaque. We've got a framed photo of various pictures from your six years in office. The, uh, the nameplate, and as well as the gavel that you've got, you, you can, uh, take the gavel with you as well.
Thank you, sir.
And then the last item, and I suspect this might be your favorite one, uh, because the mayor has made a very strong fashion statement over his six years here, uh, I have to present to you a very special sponger, sponger bow tie and pocket square.
Now, if I can get straight here, somewhere here, um, I read, I guess, my little... Oh, did y'all put it back here? See? That's the way they treat you when you're going out, you know? Hide your stuff. You know, I, it's my, uh, honor now to really say some things about, uh, Vice Mayor Larson, and, you know, I didn't really appreciate him saying about my attempt at humor. You know, I've had many people tell me that I should go into another line of work, you know, uh, as a comedian. I don't know if they were serious or not, and they just was trying to get rid of me. But I tell you this is that, you know, this has been really an honor, a privilege, uh, to serve with, uh, Vice Mayor Larson, you know, uh, Jeff is always to me that, that still, you know, I guess, another calming force, you know? One thing I've always liked about Jeff is that if, if he doesn't agree with something, he tells you why, he lets his vote during the talk, do it, do the talking, and then he moves on. And, uh, he's right, I've, I've enjoyed, um, working with him as, as, uh, as vice mayor, as I've enjoyed working with all of my colleagues, uh, I think that the things that we've been able to accomplish has been because that we have a, a great working relationship, you know? You know, I have many, many jokes that I could tell, but I'm gonna try to save them, 'cause I see a lot of people out here, and everybody didn't come for me. Now, some of y'all might've come to see me go, but, uh, I, I've, I've got a couple of things here for you too there, uh, Mayor. Uh, one of them, they tell me is, I'm gonna hear underneath here, it says "Flat", and this reads, uh, Jeff Larson in recognition and appreciation of dedicated and devoted service as city commissioner, 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, and vice mayor's 2014, 2015, and 16, and then it says the city of Tarpon Springs, and there's some other people I've worked with there, that's up. (laughing). Giving you my clock. Also, you know, there's a sponger clock helmet, too. Each time has your name on it, and also you can have this, I maybe should have Andrew on there. (laughing). Yeah, we also have, uh, a special gift for you that Commissioner Banther wanted to make sure that, that you would get.
Well, um, a, as, as you all know, there's very few things we can talk about without being inside a meeting like, like, like this, and, um, of, vi- 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 vice mayor and I have sat by each other since I was elected, um, and, uh, we used to get these little...
You don't have to tell them this.
No. They used to get these little packs of peanuts that we never would eat. So, he and I had a game that we would color in the eye of the Mr. Peanut to see if we get the, the bag of peanuts back, and we never would. So, somebody was eating those peanuts until Michelle figured out our game and stopped giving us peanuts, so...
We decided to get you something.
Mr. Peanut.
Mr. Peanut. It's very old, Mr. Peanut with the eye colored in. (laughing).
Uh, you know, this thing says any commission comments, but, you know, I'll wait till the end if y'all want to, you know? So, we can kinda move it on there. Um, we have, uh, the agenda. Anything anybody would like to pull? If not, chair will entertain a motion?
With approval.
Second.
Um, roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, any public comments on that? Okay. Uh, resolution, uh, item number five is resolution twenty sixteen dash eleven, ratification of election results. Um, anything anybody'd like to talk about? You wanna read it?
Please. Resolution twenty sixteen dash eleven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming the results of the municipal referendum election held in conjunction with the presidential preference primary on March fifteen, twenty sixteen, and providing for an effective date hereof. That's resolution twenty sixteen dash eleven by title only.
Chair will entertain a motion?
With approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, basically, that concludes our agenda. We go to any, uh, staff comment?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish you and Vice Mayor Larson the best, um, you know, as you leave office, and it was very, um, it's a pleasure to work with you, and, um, again, wishing you guys the best. Thank you.
Attorney?
Uh, I'd echo the chief's sentiments. It's been a pleasure serving with both of you. You all do the right thing, and, and more importantly, do it the right way. Uh, you're true credit to public service, and I thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure.
City manager? Uh, I just wanna echo, it's been a pleasure working with the both of you, uh, your examples of what public officials are, your inspiration to staff, um, your inspiration to the people, and if there's any cases ever made for term limits not being in existence, these two gentlemen to my right and left are one reason why you would possibly not have term limits. Uh, it's been a pleasure. I've learned a lot from both you, and I really wanna thank you for what you've contributed to the community, and to me, thank you.
I also would like to echo, it's been a pleasure to work with both of y'all. It's been a great six years, and I believe y'all both have represented the city very well.
Well, as it's been said, it's bittersweet, Mayor. Um, I, I think you've been a, a great, uh, citizen, uh, and, and, uh, for the city, and, and a role model, and, um, uh, twelve years of service, so, uh, I, I'm honored to have served with you, and, um, I wish you well. Uh, and I'm, I'm so happy that our meetings have been calm, and, and your sense of humor and your civility, uh, and I really appreciate those. And, uh, Vice Mayor, you know, what can I say? Your attention to detail, and, and always being prepared, and, and, uh, voting the right way, uh, for your beliefs and, and what's best for the city of Tarpon Springs. Both of you have always done that, and I appreciate that, and thank you for your service as well.
Thank you. I first just wanna thank, uh, everybody for being here tonight. It's nice to see the auditorium as full as it is, and it's certainly nice to have the type of pledge, pledge of allegiance that we did tonight. I wish our meetings, uh, were like that, uh, every week. Um, as I thought about the last five years, um, 'cause I've served with both these gentlemen, um, I really don't know a, a different mayor or a different, uh, vice mayor, um, as I've served for five years with them, so to me, it's almost as if, you know, I'm leaving office tonight as well. I'm not, I still have another year. Um, but I did, you know, as I was thinking about it, and I was in hindsight, I'm looking, and I'm paying attention, and I'm recalling all of the various different things that we did, um, I believe all of them to be positive. Um, you know, and we did great things in a, in a time when it was a challenge, you know? The economy was challenging, uh, you know, the city was, was kind of in a spot where we had to do a lot of things strategically, which I feel like we did. Um, so, in the course of the five years, I asked, uh, the city clerk to, to give us an idea, or give me an idea of how many meetings and how many nights we served together. So, you know, fun fact is, we spent a hundred and forty-two nights together, uh, which, to me, you know, that's almost a half a year, so, you know, I, I've spent more time with you gentlemen in the last five years than I have, you know, with close friends, with family that I love dearly. Um, and every meeting has been a pleasure, uh, and an honor to serve with you, both of you. Um, so I wish you the best, I thank you for your service. Uh, it's definitely bittersweet, um, you know, very, very, very proud of the time that we served together, and, uh, I look forward to, you know, continuing our friendship and seeing you around town and, uh, potentially serving together one day, uh, serving the community one day in, in another capacity, uh, in the future, so I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Yes, well, I, I, I can't add much more positive things here, but, um, I, I know, Mayor, it's been, uh, absolute pleasure to, to, to get to serve with you. I knew you a, 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 as Mr. Archie when I was young, uh, uh, grow, grow, growing up, and, uh, when I became Commissioner Banther, you never, uh, re, re, reminded me of that, so thank you, and, um, you, 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 uh, did let some rather eccentric ideas I had in my first year come to the floor to speak, even though you might not always agree with me, like the chickens and the dogs and whatnot, but, um...
Yeah, I forgot about that.
I, I, I know, but that's the thing I admire, uh, uh, about you, and it, it is, is a great example, is you always let everybody on this board or in the audience have their say, no matter what they had to say, if you were forward or against it, and, and, and that was just, uh, a, a very great thing to have, and again, I, I echo the having the calm meetings, and you had a way, um, I recall several contentious meetings we had with large items, and you'd have forty people speaking, we would kinda, it'd be late, we'd be getting tired, and you had a way of bringing things together, um, that I think is very admirable, and that I, I think that future mayors and commissioners as well should, should, should work to, 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 uh, to, you know, emulate that. So, uh, I find it hard to believe that your service is finished in Tarpon Springs, and I think we'll see you again, so I, I hope we'll see you back here soon, so I hope you don't waste much, much time in that department, so... And... Thank you. I know we have, we have our peanut story, uh, Jeff, so, uh, uh, thank you, as, as I said, I got to sit next to you for my first term, and, uh, you helped me learn some of the things up here, and, uh, I appreciate that. I, I always admired your passion for, 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 for the environment. Uh, to me, that was, that, that, that was, that, that was a very good example. I got to learn things that I wouldn't have, have, have thought of i- in, in that space. As well, your attention to detail, you can analyze a bill and invoice like I've never seen, and I, I work in accounting, so I do appreciate that, and I, and I would trust that your service is not finished as well, but I think your son's on your heels, so if I were you, I would move quickly, but thank you. It's been a pleasure to, 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 to serve with you both, and hope to serve with, with you again, so thank you.
I just wanted to thank David for the peanuts. No, I, actually, I've, I've got a, a few words, uh, prepared that I wanted to say. Um, and, and this might take a, a couple minutes, and, and I was thinking about how much I wanted to say, and then it occurred to me, the next time I come here to a meeting, if I wanna talk, I've gotta go to the podium over there, and Ms. Jacobs is gonna start the stopwatch, and I'm only gonna have four minutes, so I figure I better say what I wanna say right now. Um, the first thing I wanted to do is take this opportunity to, uh, congratulate Mayor -elect Alahoussis and Commissioner-elect Slattery. Um, I, I know, uh, the campaign season is over, and, uh, now the, the real work starts, and I know both of you already know that, uh, 'cause you've been up here before, so, uh, so I wish you luck. And I had to make a, a note on here, I, I typed these up, and I completely left off Commissioner Banther in terms of getting reelected, and, and I'll tell you what, what sometimes happens when, when you get reelected without an opponent, sometimes people almost forget about it, and what I really wanna say is, it's, that really says something about your leadership that nobody chose to run against you, and so I definitely, definitely wanna include you, uh, in that as well, so congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
It's, it's honestly, it's hard for me to believe that I've been up here for six years, and as we got closer and closer to this evening, and even, even actually before we started tonight, when, when I got here, I've had several people say to me, "Hey, aren't you glad it's over? Aren't, aren't you sick of, uh, all those meetings? Isn't it boring?" And, no. The answer is no, I'm not glad it's over, and I'm not glad it's over, honestly, 'cause it's been nothing but a pleasure, uh, to serve the city. It's been an absolute pleasure, and as, as a few people mentioned already, I truly and firmly and strongly believe that the city is moving in a positive direction, and I'm just humbled to have been a small part of that over the last six years. Um, I do wanna thank a few people right now, I wanna take this opportunity to thank a few people, uh, starting with the residents of Tarpon Springs. Um, I, I can't thank you enough for giving me the opportunity, I'm completely humbled that the residents gave me this opportunity, and, and thank you. Um, next, I wanna thank my fellow board members, and I think, and this has been said already as well, I think everybody feels the same way. One of the reasons why we've been productive and successful is that we get along. Uh, I, I think, I'm not too bold in saying, we actually like each other, and it, it really has been a pleasure, uh, to work with, with my fellow board members, uh, and that actually, uh, can be extended to those who were on the board before me, uh, or, or before this board, that, that are actually, some of them coming back this evening, uh, but it, it's been an absolute pleasure. Um, additionally, I think on this board, we've all been focused on the same goal. Uh, I think it's safe to say that we've all been working toward trying to make Tarpon Springs, uh, the best city that we can make it, and most of the time, our meetings were kinda boring, most of the time, we voted five to zero on, on most agenda items, but there were a few times where we disagreed, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of the fact that, I mean, there, there were a couple times where I was, I was very lonely, uh, losing four to one, uh, on... to one on votes. But I really appreciated the fact that my colleagues respected my opinion and allowed me to fully express my opinion. I really can't say thank you enough for that. I also want to thank our wonderful city staff, led by our city manager, Mark Lacorius. After six years, I continue to be impressed with the hard work and the level of professionalism coming from all aspects of our staff. I mean, I mean every department, every division. It's a pleasure to work with our staff. I do want to say something about our city manager. Occasionally, Mark, he looks scared. No, occasionally, Mark gets a little fired up about an issue. And he sometimes speaks with a little bit more passion than he means to. And he later will apologize and say that he was wearing his police chief hat instead of his city manager hat, and that he feels like he needs to put his city manager hat back on. And really, what I want to say about that is that, yeah, I think it's appropriate to make sure we don't get too passionate, but honestly, make sure when you put your city manager hat back on, that it doesn't cover your passion. Because I think your passion for Tarpon Springs is another reason why we've been so successful these last six years. Perhaps, most importantly, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to my family. I want to say thanks to my dad, my stepmom, my brother, for driving up from West Palm Beach to be here today. I want to say happy birthday to my dad. It's his birthday. I'd like to say, and I think I said this three years ago, when I was reelected, but I'd like to say again, that I've got the best in-laws that I could possibly have, and I thank my mother-in-law, my father-in-law, for everything that they do and for being here this evening. I want to thank my good friend Cheryl, who's like family, for being here tonight, as well as Aubrey. I want to thank my two sons, Andrew and Zane. I want to thank them for sharing daddy with the city for the last six years. And I want to tell you, these two boys have attended a number of commission meetings, and honestly, when they're in the audience, they're the best behaved ones here, and that includes our applicants, our board members. That includes everyone. Andrew and Zane are the best ones, best behaved ones in the audience, and I mean that. Thank you, Andrew and Zane. Finally, I want to thank my wonderful wife, Dory. Dory's first name is actually Dorothea, which in Greek means gift from God, and she is. And I wanted to say that in front of everybody. She convinced me to run for this position a little over six years ago. I know at the time, there was actually more than a few people that would have preferred that she run. And even now, looking back, I wonder if maybe she would have done the better job. But I did run, and I've been up here for six years. And Dory, I thank you for picking up the slack in terms of me being home at times and doing some of the city work. Thank you, and I love you. So like I said, I might have been a little bit long-winded, and I apologize for that. But the next time I want to speak, I got to go over there, and they're going to have the stopwatch going. So I definitely wanted to say those things. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, you know, Commissioner Seaver's been over there talking about, you know, trying not to be too emotional and the rest of that stuff there. So if anything happens as far as me, it's her fault. But first, I just want to thank, or recognize the fact that Commissioner Banther also was elected, and elected without opposition. And welcome back Commissioner Slattery, and welcome the new mayor, Mayor Alahoussis, while I have this opportunity. You know, I think that Chris would do a great job, and even though Jack does not acknowledge my Greek heritage, all right, you know, they know in the Greek community that I am the butcher. I do butcher the language, you know. But I appreciate this opportunity. And, you know, first and foremost, you know, I thank God. I know that sometime, you know, that's not politically correct, but, you know, God has blessed me to be the mayor of what I consider the greatest city, and it's a city that is home to me and always has been. I tell a story about, you know, I really wasn't born in Tarpon. I was born in a time when things were a little different. I was born in Tampa, but I only stayed in Tampa just long enough for my mother to recuperate and bring me back to Tarpon. So Tarpon is home, but also, I'm also very thankful for my church, Eastlake Church of God in Christ. My senior pastor and bishop couldn't be with us. He's out of state. His wife, Lady Jean, the executive pastor, did the invocation. I thank Eric for that. I thank all of the deacons in my church family, who's been very supportive of me over the years. But also, I thank, you know, see, I started to get a little emotional, because I thank my wife, because she's always been my biggest supporter, you know. One of them, I should say. My biggest supporter is my mother, who supported me when others might not have. And I appreciate that, you know. She's getting a little older. She's had to put up with me for a while, you know. Now she's 97, which is the reason I started working out. I started to work out a little bit, because I thought I might be around a little while. Who knows what's going to happen. I thank, you know, my brother Sam, who's not here, but my sister Verdi's, her daughter Gabrielle, who lets everybody know I'm not her favorite uncle. Though I'm not working on it either. And the rest of my family, you know. I thank my confidant advisor, you know. This person here would definitely give you his opinion, whether you wanted it or not. And that's Glenn Davis. You know, some of y'all might recognize him as the first African-American that was ever elected to the city of Tarpon, you know. I just want to just squash the rumor right now that he's thinking about running again, you know. I know that's floating around out there. But I appreciate them, you know. I'm thankful to the organization that I work for, the board of directors. Some of them are here tonight, because they supported me in my quest to serve the citizens of Tarpon Springs. I thank, you know, these individuals, I probably don't thank enough, I'll tell you that. And that's the staff of CAP, who have supported me and the community for a while. Also, I'm thankful to the city staff, you know. I'm thankful to our city manager. Now, I tell people, I think we have the best city manager out, but that's according to what day it is. I've been working with Mark for a while, you know, and just, you know, just, Mark, don't let him run your blood pressure up, you know. Because like Jeff said, Mark is very passionate about the city of Tarpon, and providing good services. But, you know, we have truly a very committed staff here. That's why Tarpon is one of the best places, the best place you could want to live, you know. I tell you that there are two individuals that I think epitomize, to me, what Tarpon is about for, is the staff under the leadership of Mark, and that's Karen Limas, you know. And some of y'all know Karen, some of you don't, but there's a lot of things happening for redevelopment in Tarpon, and Karen's at the forefront. She's a driver. But also, I thank Trish Hickey, you know. I can tell you this, Trish is the mayor's secretary, and she's the city manager's secretary. So you know, right away, she has a challenge. But Trish is definitely an individual that's been a pleasure for me to work with. I tell her, for these six years that I've been in office, and definitely, they do epitomize what we have as a staff. And we have a very dedicated staff, and we are blessed to have these individuals. But also, you've heard tonight that, you know, about the commission, and I tell you that Commissioner of Vice Mayor Larson, and Commissioner Banther, Tarpani, Commissioner Seaver, it's been great to work with, you know. Being on the commission, this body, you know, we all bring different backgrounds, different experiences. And I learned a lot from all of you, and I appreciate your loyalty and dedication to this city. You've assisted in charting a course for future commissioners, and creating a place where residents are proud to live. You know, it's my hope that future commissioners will operate with the level of respect that each of you have shown me and each other. I think that that's what I've enjoyed the most, is that, you know, as Jeff said, you know, we've grown to not only work with each other, but like each other and respect each other. And that's one thing, is that even if someone disagrees and differs, and have another opinion about which way they think that we should go as a city, nobody's done it in a disagreeable manner. Nobody's, you know, been, hey, waiting for the next vote so they can prove a point to somebody. So I've appreciated that. You know, you've exhibited the fact that, you know, having respect does not deter you from working passionately for the things that you believe will make Tarpon better. So I thank each of you who worked with me for the betterment of Tarpon Springs. And lastly, I just want to thank the community. I'd like to thank the residents, you know, all of you that have given me the privilege, and I do indeed think it's a privilege to be the mayor of the city of Tarpon. You know, being elected here has been an honor. You know, I look at it as giving me the fortune of meeting some people. One of them has been Aiden Rooney. And when I met Aiden, Aiden was in elementary school. Now he's in middle school. But he's showing me that our future's in good hands. You know, Aiden has been like my conscience, you know. Aiden will come around, and he'll say, "Hey, listen, on the model of the cane, y'all got those cones up, those orange cones? Y'all gonna have them?" I mean, hey, it doesn't represent us well, you know. He started looking at things that we should do in the city. And I appreciate him, and I appreciate all of the others that have assisted us in being a great city. There are many others who imparted their wisdom on this humbling journey that I've embarked upon. And I remember Winnie Toll, and some of you don't, Winnie was around when I first started. You know, they say it's been 12 years for me, but actually, it's been 16 and a half. It's why I appreciate my wife, because 16 and a half of my years have been up here, trying to do what I believe is right for the citizens of Tarpon. But Winnie, along with my campaign manager, to my father, who was my mentor and hero, you know, they're no longer with us, but they live on through the spirit that Tarpon always exhibits when it rises to the occasion of assisting others. And you know, sometimes people ask me, what's next? And today, I can truly tell you, I have no, no political aspirations. None. But tomorrow, who knows? Only time will tell. For those that believe that I don't have a job, rest assured, I'll be at Union Academy Family Center, where I've served for the last 22 years as executive director. But that just tells me I need to do a better job of letting people know about citizens' lives of progress, because they don't think I have a job. But if that doesn't work, Lowe's has given me the opportunity to come. They say they like the way I look in that red vest, so I'll have a job. But truly, it's been a great journey. I will forever cherish the new friends that I made, and hopefully, I haven't created too many new enemies. You know, it's my hope that all of you realize that I try to do my best to make Tarpon a better place. Thanks again for the level of trust you had in electing me as your mayor. It's truly the best place to live, and it's the best place to live because of people like you. So I say thank you. I definitely appreciate that, and I know we're going out of order a little bit, but, you know, are there any public comments that tell me, you know, if I don't do it, then I get whipped? You know, I'm shocked that Peter is doing public comments first. That's what hit me, is first.
Bob Dockry, In a Strive. I've been in Tarpon Springs 25 years, almost, and it's my home. And on a personal level, it really makes me feel comfortable to have a group like you, ladies and gentlemen, looking after the town. I want to thank you, I want to especially thank Mayor Archie and Vice Mayor Larson for their work. People think that the job is just sitting at commission meetings. They don't realize the hours of preparation the commission puts in. And they never think about all the harassment, if you will, that you have to put up with from people like me and other people who want special things done. And from a personal point of view, thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless all of you. Especially, I want to give my thanks to our outgoing mayor and vice mayor. Thank you.
Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. And I would have actually been first, but you didn't call for public comments after the presentation for Jack Latvala. So I have to begin with that. As a Democrat, and Senator Latvala being Republican, we sometimes have differences in ideological views or something. But I have to stand here and say thank you, thank you, thank you, for being the moderate voice, the voice of sense, common sense, and reasoning among our legislators in Tallahassee. I want to thank our board, especially Vice Mayor Larson, for the city passing the resolution about the anti-fracking, and your efforts in stopping that. As most of you know, we've got a big sinkhole out there on Mango. Fracking affects our water levels. We are too fragile to do this. So I applaud the efforts that you have done in this, and other environmental aspects. Other environmental issues that I feel as important, as Commissioner Banther mentioned, that Commissioner Larson led him along this way, and I hope the future commission will continue to look at this. But on March 31st, in the New York Times, there was an article about the glaciers on the west coast of Antarctica melting at a higher rate than anticipated. We are the Venice of the South. We are all lined with bayous. If we don't take actions to stop this, we will be walking in ankle-deep water, and our homes will be inaccessible to our cars and other things. So I would look to this board and the future board to lobby our state, our federal people, and what we can do on a local level to help in this crisis. And we individually have to look at ways to find, to reduce our carbon footprint. Because, I don't know, where I've lived for 20 years now, every year, the last couple years, the high tides have been higher. Full moon and a wind out of the west, forget it. You can't go home around Whitcomb Bayou. You have to come around, and I'm sure it's the same in some other spots. I see you nod in your hair. You know where the creek backs up. So this is an important issue that we all need to take responsibility for. And as far as for this portion of the meeting, I do wish to say that even though the mayor and I have had sometimes disagreements on policy and issues, you have been a good steward for Tarpon Springs, not only in this term, but through the terms that you have served. for Tarpon Springs, not only in this term, but through the terms that you have served, and it is a remarkable feat to have spent this much time on the board, and that's because the people do believe that deep down you are an honest, trustworthy, hard-working person, and you do have the interests of the people in Tarpon at their forefront, and I thank you for that. And for Commissioner Larson, I know six years ago I passed keys to you, and you'll do the same now, and you were right, it goes by quick, and when you get to this side, you only get four minutes. However, there is a procedure we put in that you do get two minutes for every person who volunteered, or up to 10 minutes, so you have that option. But I do want to honor and thank those board members leaving for your dedication and service, because as we all know, those times sometimes can be very difficult in making decisions when others are, let's say, nipping at your heels. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments, we will adjourn. You know, I should start praying now, you know.
Future of Tarpon Springs, his niece, Gabrielle, she wants to sing a song before that. Biblically, there's a scripture that says, "The greatest among you shall be your servant." And truly, my brother has been a servant for the citizens of Tarpon Springs, and we love you. And of the Archie family, he knows his mother loves him the best. My mom just got out of hospital one week. She asked her, will she come to this, and she's here. Well, that's true love. First one for David. Gabrielle's gonna sing.
Castle on a Cloud.
Castle on a Cloud. Even when we have challenges, there's still hope.
Oh, no, me. There is a castle on a cloud. I like to go there in my sleep. A tent is for me to sleep. Not in my castle on a cloud. There is a room that's full of toys. There are a hundred boys and girls. Nobody shouts or talks too loud. Not in my castle on a cloud. There is a lady all in white, holds me and sings a lullaby. She's nice to see and she's soft to touch. She says, Cosette, I love you very much. I know a place where no one's lost. I know a place where no one cries. Crying at all is not allowed. Not in my castle on a cloud.
I have to clap too, just because she didn't say bad things about me. But with that, Chris, I wasn't trying to prolong it with that song, trying to be a pillow on it. But we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:23, and I say, saladai. We'll take a little short break.
Oh, hi. Very sad tonight. I'm up here crying.
Okay, all right, all right.
That would be great, thank you.
I'm working, I'm trying.
I see. You've been my conscience, you know, people have been right.
What are you talking about?
You're moving here, that's why you're coming. I get all kinds of goodies. Look at this. I think I'm gonna get. I'm not just gonna hold on, I gotta shake some hands. Can I take that? There we go. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, son. Appreciate it. Hey, thank you for the laugh with the trees.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's why I like to be down here.
Cheers and joy. Hey, y'all playing musical chairs?
I know.
Hey, I started to tell her, you know. Hey, what did I do just before?
I have a music.
Bring the boys, let's do some rock.
Everyone just put that in there.
I'm not sure where she went.
Yeah, right? This is a puzzle in here.
Michelle.
You should, that's when it really gets to.
Make sure he signed all those. Is that Susan's, Michelle? Did he sign all those? Keep us all together, I think.
Occasionally, man.
That's true. Genetica is about beautiful, there's no way.
This is Adam.
Here, right? Yes, flowers. And then our paintings.
Brandon, you wanna do that for?
Oh, I bet.
You cool or not?
Yeah.
You can feel it, Chip.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it makes great age. I bought a great age football.
I wanna see.
Barely make the seat.
I don't have any back.
Good seat.
Tell them what great age.
Yeah, it makes great age.
Come on, man.
No, you're there.
Too tall. What's up, Logan?
Appreciate the good job y'all been doing.
Thank you.
I don't know if you got any questions.
I was in the book room before.
A little wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, we built it.
I don't know if you got any questions.
I don't know if you got any questions.
If you guys would be embarrassed, fine.
We have adults that hate worse.
We need show video.
Yeah, yeah.
I used to say hi.
I saw you back there. How you doing? Yeah, yeah, I saw you back there.
If I could have your attention, please?
How you doing?
We'd like to go ahead and get started with the next portion of our meeting, so if we could take a seat, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm shrieking.
I'm ready to go, let's do it.
Way better seat here.
I love that seat, it's a close, I just about walk.
Whole change the guard than that, what we do here.
All right, so what time do you think the rest of the?
I have hope.
That one's really good.
I have hope, well, it all does, I think we have another hour.
That's fair. I actually think I picked eight thirty.
I think that's the over-under, I think we're good.
I know.
I was hoping we would be by eight, but there's no way it's gonna happen.
They go by C R, they go on the ship.
Here, thank you. Thanks, thank you very much. He's trying to rush it. Right, that won't change.
Hey, well, go ahead and get started. If I can have Mayor-elect Chris Alahuzis and his family, please come forward. You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name. Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support?
That will support.
Protect and uphold?
Protect and uphold.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
And the charters?
And the charters.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the city of Tarpon Springs?
Of the city of Tarpon Springs.
That I'm duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold the office?
To hold the office.
Of Commissioner Seat Four?
Of Commissioner Seat Four.
That I will faithfully perform?
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of that office?
The duties of that office.
On which I am now?
At which I'm now?
About to enter. And if I could have Commissioner-elect Susan Slattery and her family come forward? If you could raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye. Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and uphold?
Protect and uphold.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
And the charters?
And the charters.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the city of Tarpon Springs?
Of the city of Tarpon Springs.
That I'm duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold the office?
To hold the office.
Of Commissioner Seat Four?
Of Commissioner Seat Four.
That I will faithfully perform?
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of that office?
The duties of that office.
On which I am now?
About to enter.
And if I could have Commissioner-elect Susan Slattery and her family come forward? If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name. Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and uphold?
Protect and uphold.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
And the charters?
And the charters.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the city of Tarpon Springs?
Of the city of Tarpon Springs.
That I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold the office?
To hold the office.
Of Commissioner Seat Four?
Of Commissioner Seat Four.
That I will faithfully perform?
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of that office?
The duties of that office.
On which I am now?
At which I'm now?
About to enter. And if I could have Commissioner-elect Susan Slattery and her family come forward? If you could raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name.
David Banther.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and uphold?
Protect and uphold.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida?
And of the state of Florida.
And the charters?
And the charters.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the city of Tarpon Springs?
Of the city of Tarpon Springs.
That I'm duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold the office?
To hold the office.
Of Commissioner Seat Four?
Of Commissioner Seat Four.
That I will faithfully perform?
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of that office?
The duties of that office.
On which I am now?
At which I'm now?
About to enter.
About to enter.
And if I could have Commissioner-elect Susan Slattery and her family come forward? If you could raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye. Do you solemnly swear or affirm? That I will support, protect, and uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida, and the charter and laws of the city of Tarpon Springs? That I am duly qualified? To hold the office of Commissioner Seat Three? That I will faithfully perform the duties of that office on which I am now about to enter. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm now called to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April the 5th, 2016 at 7:35 PM. Roll call, please. Mayor Alahuzis?
Here.
Commissioner Tara Penny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Slattery?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Father James Rosakis from the St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. Please, everyone stand.
Let us pray to the Lord, Lord of mercy. O Lord, our God, you created us and brought us into this life, and have said that apart from me, you can do nothing. In faith, we embrace these words, and we gather this evening to entreat your blessings upon your servants, Mayor-elect Chris Alahuzis, as well as David Banter, Commissioner-elected, and Commissioner-elect Susan Slattery, along with the returning commissioners. Bless them as they begin to serve with distinction, dignity, and honor the city of Tarpon Springs. We also offer thanksgiving for David Archie and Jeff Larson to honor their many years of dedicated service. O Lord, our God, look with mercy upon those who govern the great city of Tarpon Springs, the mayor, the city manager, the city commissioners, and the staff. Grant to them the grace to know and do your will. Let them serve all the citizens with truth and righteousness. Inspire them with the courage to make and uphold the laws for this glorious city and for the good of all those who reside therein. Give to our civil officials the spirit of wisdom, patience, love, and understanding that they may discern the truth and impartially administer. Keep them safe and healthy in mind and body so they can fulfill their sacred responsibility. Grant to the civil authorities and residents of Tarpon Springs, as well as those who labor for the city, the power to make this government continue to work so that all may prosper, all may grow, and be as tranquil... and be as tranquil as the waters of the city seal. We ask this in your name that you continue to bless Tarpon Springs and its new leadership. Amen.
Thank you, Father. The next item on the agenda is presentations. I will ask Commissioner Tara Panney to come forward.
First, we have for you, Mayor, your official name tag, Mayor Chris Alahouzis. We have a new pen for you. Also, another pen.
Thank you.
Most importantly, Mayor, most importantly, we have your gavel, so you can rule our meetings here.
Fancy gavel.
I know, it's a nice one, right? And then next is for Commissioner Slattery. This is your new pen. Not that you couldn't use your old pen, but now you have a new one. Well, congratulations.
Are any public comments on this item? Here now on, are there any commission comments? Here now on
Mayor? I just...
Commissioner Tara Panney?
Okay. I just wanted to take the opportunity to officially congratulate you, Mayor, and tell you how excited I am to work with you in this term. We worked well together in the past and you've always been a champion of mine and I feel like someone who has supported me up here and prior to being up here as my, you know, as the role prior to as the Budget Advisory Committee and I know that we worked well together on, you know, many issues in the past when we served together on this board and I look forward to continue to serve well with you and serving the people of the City of Tarpon Springs and keep our positive momentum going. So, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Panther?
Yes, it's just a pleasure to be able to be here with you and serve with you. I took your seat when you were termed out and you were very supportive of that. I look forward to working with you on the various transit issues that you campaigned on. I think it's gonna be very important that we improve those services for all of our residents and I look forward to the various unique things that you will bring to the board and I look forward to your service.
Thank you, thank you very, very much.
Well, that's my comment. I'll just, I also wish for Susan as well. Susan, it's great to have you back and we govern well together, I think. For my first year or two years, was it first year?
One year.
One year, yes. So, I'm excited to have you back. I think you bring just a great passion about our community, the environment and business in general. So, I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, welcome, Mayor Alahouzis. And I know that you're used to being up here. You supported me as a business owner when you were Commissioner and I appreciated that. And so, I know that you really care about our business community and of course, all of Tarpon Springs. So, congratulations and welcome. And I also want to welcome back Commissioner Slattery. I know that you've had six years of experience and also care very much about the city or are passionate about our city. So, welcome, Susan.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Commissioner Tara Panney?
Yeah, thank you. I also, I didn't want to exclude Commissioner Slattery or and also offer my congratulations to Commissioner Banther, serving with both y'all in the past. Look forward to continue to do what we do up here. So, I will say though that Commissioner Banther, the mayor, has always said that if you're not doing a good job up here, the people will let you know. So, because you ran unopposed, I'd say that you're doing a pretty good job. So, congratulations, glad to have you back.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number three, Resolution 2016-12, Election of a Vice Mayor. Normally, this position is filled by the most senior member of the board and I would like to recommend Commissioner Tara Panney. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now on, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I will motion to appoint Townsend Tara Panney as our Vice Mayor.
I second that motion.
Are there any commission comments?
I would just like to say, assuming the motion passes, thank you for your confidence. Looking forward to it.
Roll call, please.
The Attorney will read the title.
Okay.
Resolution 2016-12, A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Appointing Commissioner Townsend Tara Panney Vice Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs and Providing For an Effective Date Hereof. That's Resolution 2016-12 by title only.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tara Panney?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes. Congratulations, glad to meet you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item number four, Appointment to the General Employment Pension Plan. This is a replacement of Vice Mayor Larson, who was served representing the B O C to the board. This board meets once a quarter unless they have special meetings. Anyone interested to serve on that committee?
You wanna do it?
Yeah, I'll do it. Do you want to?
I'd be willing to do it. I've sat on the board before, so.
Take it over.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Well, are there any public comments on this item? No. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Commissioner Susan Slattery to the General Employees Pension Board.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Panney?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzis?
Thank, yes. Thank you. The next item is Appointment to the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. This is to replace the Mayor Archie from, he served as a representative for the B O C and they meet on the second Monday every month in Pinellas Park. With the permission of the board, I'd like to move to continue the mayor to be the representative for this board. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now on, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve that I will be represented?
Yes.
Thank you. Any commission comments on that? No. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Panney?
Yes.
Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda. Next, we'll go into the public comments on these, any items that were not discussed on this evening.
Hello, my name is Chris Lang. I live at 502 Lincoln Avenue. I'd like to welcome the new members here. I'm hoping that you can be enlightened to this point, what's been going on in our neighborhood. We have sent a letter to Mr. Banther in regards to what is now updating you on what's going on with the nuisance property in our neighborhood. They have been closed for some unknown reason and because they have been closed, all the nuisance problems we were having are gone. There's no loitering, there's no swearing, there's no litter, there's no constant horns, there's no constant radios. I think that goes to show what a nuisance it is having a commercial property in a residential neighborhood that just doesn't work. We've also been brought to light that because there is zero parking for this business, that they're gonna allow, the city is gonna allow parking on our street. We have very narrow streets. We have no garages or driveways that face the street. We all park behind our residences. Right now, we're having issue with our utilities getting through, our mailman getting through, the garbage getting through and if there was ever really an emergency, they would not be able to get through. So, by letting them park on our streets and in front of our houses is gonna compound the issue that we already have. I'm here today just to enlighten you with this fact, give you a copy of this email and find out from you if any progress has been made with regards to this building, as all the neighbors would like to know.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and for the record, and you have, you begin in four minutes.
My name is Tom Weeks. I live at 505 Lincoln Avenue. I want to support what Chris is saying. We've been having a problem since November of 2015 with this property and we appreciate the police force providing assistance with us. But I do believe that this is a community issue and not just a policing issue and that there are problems within the neighborhood that need to be addressed, not by just policemen, but by the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? No. Staff comments, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate you on your election. Commissioner Slattery, I'd like to congratulate you on yours. Commissioner Banther, congratulations on your reelection. And Commissioner Tara Panney, congratulations on being Vice Mayor. I wish you all the best of success while in office and I look forward to serving with you and serving all the members on the board. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Same comments as the Chief. Congratulations to all of you. I've worked with all of you before on behalf of the law firm and looking forward to working with you again. And please do not hesitate to call on us as we can be of assistance to you in returning to office. Congratulations and looking forward to a good relationship.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes. First of all, for Commissioner Banther, all the things said about why you ran unopposed, that the citizens were happy with you is true. I know you take pride in it, but as City Manager and our staff, we take pride in it too, that we provided, able to provide for you and provide that to happen. I think you're a string of the last four incumbents that have run unopposed. So, while it's an honor for those up there, it's also an honor for us to be able to provide that. So, congratulations. Now, for Commissioner Slattery and Mayor Alahouzis. These are two individuals, seven years ago, along with another former Commissioner in the audience, Commissioner Delakis, who had faith in me to give the three votes to make me City Manager. And it's something I always remember. I know, especially for Commissioner Slattery, she was a new Commissioner. I don't really think a lot of people supporting her were too keen on the idea of supporting someone who'd been 30 years in law enforcement and despite my love and passion for the city, thought that I may not be capable of the job. And I always tell everybody that if I was in her position, being newly elected and taking that chance, I probably would have voted against me also. But she didn't. She had faith in me along with, at that time, Commissioner Alahouzis, Commissioner Delakis, enabled me to take this position seven years ago and I'm very grateful and I've been so happy to work with this Commission and all the ones from the time that I was brought forward to do the best for the City of Tarpon Springs. So, obviously, the judge say, I was in court, asked me how long I've got. I said, well, with the election, I hope I at least got three more years because we got a great board here that work well together and we've got plenty to do the next three years for Tarpon. I look forward to doing it and look forward to doing it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our City Clerk.
I too would like to congratulate Mayor Alahouzis, Commissioner Banther and Commissioner Slattery. I've worked with y'all in the past and I look forward to working with all of y'all in the future.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Board comments, Commissioner Slattery?
Oh, thank you. Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening and coming out to celebrate because this is always such a special event every time we have a new election in town. I do want to congratulate Commissioner Banther for running unopposed. You've proven to be a leader in our community and I want to thank you for your service and it does show, because you did run unopposed, that, you know, we love you here in our community and thank you for the work that you do and I look forward to working with you again, as we did serve before and I look forward to getting some work done. And I want to congratulate Mayor Alahouzis. We've worked together in the past as well and I look forward to working with you again the next three years. I think we have a great board and we'll get a lot accomplished. I want to thank some people that have worked really hard during my campaign. I had some great volunteers that worked behind the scenes, making phone calls, helping with my mailers, walking door to door, standing at the polls. These people have worked for me every time I've run and we've done, they've done a great job. And once again, with their help, we were able to have another win and I can't say enough to all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. You're all amazing. I did have, I do have, did have amazing campaign managers, Marty and Kathy Peters, again, and unfortunately, they couldn't be with us this evening, but I can't thank them enough for all they've done. And last but not least, I have to say, my treasurer, Becky Archer. Thank you for everything, Becky. She keeps me in line or kept me in line. She's good, she's very well-known for that and thank you for your hard work. I appreciate what you did. Again, I have to thank my family. Again, we made it through another election. It was quite trying at times. Thank you for your support and your patience and my son Matthew and my new husband, Steve. We just got married. So, I want to thank you again for all your patience and your support. We did have a lot of trying times, but we did make it through. We made it through quite a bit, especially getting married during an election time. It was tough, but we did it. I want to thank the city staff. They did do an amazing job in helping with any of our needs, especially City Manager's Office, Ms. Hickey, Trish, we love her. And then we have in the Clerk's Office, we have Irene and Michelle and all the other wonderful ladies that helped and do so much and anytime we have a question, they're there to help. And they put all this together tonight as well, too. So, they do a wonderful job. Thank you, ladies. I want to thank the citizens of the community for voting for me again and having the trust and support in me to serve your community. I'm looking forward to being a voice here again within Tarpon Springs and I hope I can serve you all well. And I'm always available to listen to all concerns and especially ideas. Bring them to me at any time and let's just continue to make our city shine. And I just want to congratulate Mayor Archie. You are a true leader and we will miss you so much. Thank you for serving our community, all the years that you gave to Tarpon Springs and I want to thank Mrs. Archie for sharing him with us. He's a wonderful man. You will be missed, truly missed. And where's, oh, Jeff, there you are. Sorry. Jeff and I go back a long way and I was very happy when he decided to run for office and we served very well together and the family and I've watched the kids grow up and they're just a wonderful family. Jeff, you did a great job and you did make a difference as well in our community and I want to thank you for that and I hope we see you again soon. Thank you.
Commissioner Pen?
Yes, thank you. And I do want to thank no one for running against me so I can serve a second term. Though this really is the honor of my life to get to serve my hometown, as I said, when I first was up here. And I think we got a lot accomplished during our first term. We went from very high usage of our reserve funds for the budget now to I think we're gonna be almost neutral in this year or next year. The development in Tarpon Springs is just phenomenal right now and that's much, much thanks to our City Manager and our city staff and people that have not given up on projects that would have been just gone. So, I'm very happy with those things. In my second term, I hope to see that we get... In my second term, I hope to see that we get the Enclo Dredge project started. I think that's a vital project for the sponge docks and for Tarpon Springs as a whole. That is a working port, it's not just a tourist attraction, and I will need to make sure that we maintain the river and the viability of that river. So I know you'll be seeing more things in the news coming up the next few years, but it's very important to Tarpon Springs, and I look forward to continuing that and working with this new board, and I have learned so much from my colleagues over the years, and I hope to learn much more in these final three, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Seber.
No comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just, you know, echo my comments before, I look forward to picking up where we left off last week or two weeks ago, and doing positive things with the new board. We've all worked together before, so we can do so in harmony, and I have utmost confidence in, you know, the people who are reelected and the people currently sitting up here, and I know that we're going to continue to do great things for you all, the people who are responsible for putting us in office and trusting us basically with your home, so look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it's my turn. I want to begin by saying thank you to all of you for being here tonight. Two years ago, when I was preparing to retire from Verizon, I decided that I wanted to run for mayor for Tarpon Springs. I went to, my cousin, who's also my campaign manager, and I told him that we needed to put together a campaign for mayor's race. He was not enthusiastic at all about my choice, and he wanted to know why. Says, why you want to do that? You were going to retire? This is the time that you're going to travel, not get another job. But it's not easy to explain, but I will try. I have lived in Tarpon Springs for forty-nine years, almost fifty years. My three sons, John, George, and Phil, and my two beautiful granddaughters who were born and raised in Tarpon Springs. The city of Tarpon Springs has given me more than I ever can pay back. There is nothing more satisfying in life than helping others and to serve your community. So when I praise these issues, they need attention, I knew that I had made the right decision. To make my decision a reality, I got the help, I received the help from many people, many enthusiastic people, and many contributors. At the top of my list is my campaign manager, Mr. George Mondaloo, and my very good friend, Jimmy Colianos, that sits right there on the corner. Next is my campaign team, that I am very thankful for their hard work, their dedication, and their love to Tarpon Springs. We had many, many contributors, and I'm very grateful to them for their support. Last but not least, are the citizens of Tarpon Springs. I'm humbled for their overwhelming vote of confidence, and I will do all in my power to make sure that the people's trust will not be misplaced. My principal objective is to have a transparent government, to seek people's input, to help the BOC, us, to make better decisions for the betterment of Tarpon Springs. I look forward to work with our city manager, Mr. Licouris, our staff, to accomplish our goals for better Tarpon Springs. In closing, I would like to, I would like to commend Mayor Archie and Vice Mayor Larson for their long public service and their dedication to Tarpon Springs. Mayor Archie has served many years for the BOC. He served just about every position there is. He served as a commissioner, as a vice mayor, as the mayor for six years. David, I also like to congratulate and thank you for the programs you initiated, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge and the Mayor's Apple Awards. We thank you for those great programs. To Vice Mayor Jeff Larson, I want to thank you for your professionalism, your contributions to the BOC, you were always prepared with positive ideas. Thank you, Jeff. To Commissioner Slattery, I would like to congratulate you for your election, and I'm looking forward to work with you as we did in the past. Along with our new Vice Mayor Terrapini and Commissioner Seber, 2016 is going to be a very productive year for us, and I'm looking forward for all of us, all of us here, to work together as a team to serve you, the people of Tarpon Springs, better than we ever did in the past, and thank you all for being here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the regular session, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:05 PM, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Mayor, I'll always call you mayor.
Thank you.